Good evening and welcome to the December 2nd School Board Meeting of Boltonsville Central School District. Nice to have everybody here. Hope you've had a nice Thanksgiving and a nice long weekend. Welcome back, schools now in session. Please join me in rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands in my nation under God, in the name of the great religion of Christ. And roll call is complete, I assume?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We saw the Board of Education approved the agenda for the December 2nd 2024 Regular Board of Education meeting. Tom? I think I have Wayne over here. I have Luke, I'm sorry, Luke. Those in favor? opposed, motion carries. And we always put our most important orders first, and that is the spotlight. So Dr. DeBarry and Luke will handle the spotlight tonight.
Thank you. We are very excited this evening to recognize students as well as athletes and staff. We're going to first begin by recognizing the students who participated in our holiday greeting card contest. The district office held its annual holiday greeting card contest last month. We had a team assembled of judges to select ten finalists out of the dozens of entries that we received. The artwork was placed on the district's Facebook page for public voting during the Thanksgiving holiday. More than fifteen hundred votes were cast, and the winners and the finalists are being recognized here this evening. We thank everyone who participated. I can say that the judges had a very hard time selecting the finalists, and they were all very impressed with the level of talent and creativity with all the entries. Certainly much nicer artwork than I could have created, for certain. So, thank you to all of our students. So we'll first start with our finalists. We're going to recognize fifth grader from McHenry Elementary School, Scarlett Greco. We'll move to fifth grader, also at McHenry. We have third grader from the Amherst Elementary School, Ty Murphy. We have first grader from Allen Elementary School, Skylar Russo. We have first grader from Reynolds Elementary School, Kendall Segoin. We have fourth grader from Palmer Elementary School, Maya Sheets. We have another fourth grader from Palmer Elementary School, Ian Schultz. We have third grader from McHenry Elementary School, Everett Simpson. Our last finalist, fourth grader from Reynolds Elementary School, Hayden Smith. Our winner was from Amherst Elementary School and it's a third grader, and that is Ansh So I know most of the schools, they've already seen copies of the drawings that were created, and I think some of the schools might be sending out their own holiday cards with some of our finalists' work, but this guy right here is going to have the digital card that goes out just before the holiday break.
Parents, come on up. We're going to take a picture, please.
Come in front of the stage. Yeah, there we go. Congratulations, everybody. Big smiles on your flag.
Is she here? Okay, hold on, hold on.
Oh, we got them. Yay!
It was Scarlett, right?
Yeah.
Scarlett Greco.
Two of them.
So this time I'm going to ask Mr. Canforia, our director of athletics, to go forward. We are going to recognize our Fall 2024 champions. So we're excited, I'm going to have the Board of Education to recognize our student athletes for their outstanding achievements and accomplishments during the Fall 2024 athletic season. We're first begin with our Section III Class AAA Champions, girls volleyball. So we have three of our senior players. And we're going to call up...
Members of that team include Olivia Pataglia, Emma Marie Buddha, Avery Cavallaro, Natalie Duffiness, Avery Davenport, Emily Dean, Allison Dixon, Isabel Flood, Addison Garcia, Amelia Ha, Alexandra Haas, Samantha Haas, Kiana Husini, Anaya Johnson, Maya Linsky, Madison McKenna, Aubrey Morris, Mallory O'Leary, and Hannah Simmons.
I did. Oh, do the coaches have to say?
Oh, the coach there. He was there.
In front of the table or behind the table? You guys are taller than the little... One more, one more.
We're excited to recognize our Section III Class AAA Champion, Boys Soccer Team.
The members of that team include Cameron Abraham, Derek Barr, Sawyer Barr, Dylan Leidzdel, Jonathan Bozlefsky, Lucas Corbin, Owen Daly, Devon Dunkinson, Jack Dutter, Enzo Falso, Aiden Griffin, Ethan Har, Brayden Harris, Aiden Holcomb, Aiden Jones, Jonah McMullin, Brayden Mahoney, Jagger Radmaker, Alex Rao, Michael Sacco, Nicholas Sacco, Joseph Salam, Brayden Schrader, Alex Smith, Cole Spiegel, Noah Stahl, Garrett Staring, William Stevens, and Karsten St. John. And the coaches include Coach Skymaker, Coach T.K., and Coach Ross.
We're excited to recognize Section III Champion in the One Hundred Yard Butterfly, who also competed in the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Girls Swimming and Giant Championships, Olivia Nance. We're excited to recognize girls varsity tennis player Sunny Hasden and Lady Nesbit, Section III Champions for doubles, and they also competed in the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Girls Tennis Championships. We are also recognizing player Mira Hasden, Section III Champion for singles, and competed in the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Girls Tennis Championships. She also received a sportsmanship award. And last, but certainly not least, Ayla Calathus, competed in the New York State Public High School Association Girls Tennis Championships in singles.
And again, parents, come on up and take a picture up front.
Moving on to our country, we have Cameron Martin. So Coach DeRi, Cameron. She has competed in the New York State Public High School Association CrossFit Championships and placed point one first. So we have a few other athletic-related outside school activities to reference. So we're going to first start by recognizing the tenth grader, C. W. Baker High School, And she competed in the United States Figure Skating Association Eastern Sectional Championships in November in Boston, in order to qualify and in her head to be the top twenty-five athlete per level and section. And I know was also a member of the JV Girls Soccer Team. Has a grueling schedule off and on, off and on and off the ice for training. She trains locally at the Three Rivers Rankin at the Skinny House Community Center. We move on to recognize the eleventh grader, Baker High School, Joey Zuccalillo. Joey is a third degree black belt. In October, he's referred to as the Iceman, competed in the ISKA Amateur World Kickboxing Championship in Vienna, Austria. Congratulations to you guys today. We're going to now transition to our final spotlight this evening to recognize the higher two staff members here in the district. Kristen Siller, health teacher at Virgina High School, and Gina Hayes, health teacher at Baker High School. So Kristen and Kristen. Kristen and Gina are the honor for their dedication to their students' mental health. They went above and beyond by agreeing to be trained and certified over the summer break through adjusting their curriculums to fit the teen mental health first aid training. Kristen and Gina were nominated by Jenna Wolken, our Director of People and Personal Services. Here's an excerpt from her nomination. The Teen Mental Health First Aid is a new program that we started last year at Boltonsville Central School District, specifically C. W. Baker High School. To sustain this valuable program, our health teachers have added it into their curriculum and will continue to offer it every year. These two teachers have gone above and beyond, agreeing to get trained and certified over the summer, and adjusting their curriculums to fit the needs of this program. They have created an environment for students where students feel safe, understood, and supported, and they'll have the tools to navigate mental health for themselves and their friends moving forward. This certainly is a very important training, and we appreciate Gina and Kristen's efforts to prioritize our students' mental health. Thank you for going to public analysis over all of our students.
We want to thank everybody for coming in. Congratulations to our students and coaches and our staff. We're very proud of you, and please remember to come out next Tuesday, December 10th, and support your school for the Capital Project. But thank you all for coming. Okay, we've been moving on to the business segment, personnel scores, bonus, board activities, and committee reports. And the guests walking down the list here, we had a work session on November 18th, a special, short special board meeting. There was community debate on November the 20th, and I think a couple people attended that. I don't know, anybody else talk about it?
Joe, we focused on the Capital Project, supporting all students, and we received some good feedback, some additional questions, that we were able to update on our Capital Project website, our district website for Q and A, so that certainly helps us navigate and hopefully clarify what is included in this work, and just look forward to vote on December 10th.
Then the policy meeting was just before this. I don't know if there's any reports out of the policy meeting. I guess, I know you did some discussion on the policies, and I think those are still in the works, I guess, at this point. Is that true? Okay. And then we had a community session for the Capital Project vote, which did a nice job. That's been a lot of good work put into the analysis of that, so we're very, very pleased with those presentations. I guess we'll get to see some more videos of that later in the meeting, maybe, because that'd be great. Coming up, I don't see anything here that's new. Is there any other reports from anybody on something you attended or want to talk about? Okay. If that's, if that's all going good, then, Eevee, student board report. I hope you had a nice Thanksgiving.
How was yours?
Good, thank you.
All right, first we had senior council, a lot of chatter there with senior, junior, and sophomore council. Senior council right now is working on ball and fundraising for ball. It's a good theme, it's supposed to be like colors. Let's just see what that means. But they're going to host like a school spirit volleyball game in March to kind of help boost funds and get everyone to know each other. It's just supposed to be like a fun thing. I'm not sure if that's going to be on the list, I think that's their plan. Junior council working on prom, and then sophomore council and student council actually have their semi-final this Saturday, and they've been raising funds for that. They sold the homecoming t-shirts in support of this, and they're collecting a lot of food items for the people, food pantry with a ticket, it's like five dollars, all the ticket if you bring an item. So that's really cool, it's going to be really exciting. Friend to friend, which is like the Baker Special Ed students, had their first friend to friend after-school club meeting. We did just like painted turkeys and a lot of Thanksgiving holiday activities, which is really fun. There were a couple new kids that I got to meet. And then before break, there was the, obviously before break, but it was the, our first SAC and BLT, which is the Student Advisory Council and the Boltonsville Leadership Team. They had their first like collective meeting, which is really cool because we talked about, a lot about building culture, and we had questions posed to us on the mood tables, just, I mean, we all know the teachers, but we never knew they were on this platform, which is really cool. We talked a lot about B-TIME, which is like a form of link, or how we can get students to have a quote-unquote "study hall" with any teacher they would like. It's like a designated period every day. That's kind of still in the works. And then we talked about an open house for elective courses or just main courses as you get higher in the grades, and the different kinds of history we take or English classes we take. And essentially the idea is that we have like an activity fair for it with different foods representing different classes, that we have the teacher there and a senior to represent the student side of it, which I thought was a really cool idea. We also, okay, the Paige's Pajama Grandma raised eight thousand dollars, which is like a new high, because last year was seven thousand. That Friday, almost every kid wore pajama pants. It was really, I was kind of looking around, I was like, oh shoot, what is this? And I remembered, because I was communicating that day, but everyone was there today with praise, it was really great. I didn't point that. But the funds go to the local families in the area for those who are, you know, helping their kids through cancer. And the idea was that the pajama pants are representing those kids who can't get out of the hospital beds, it was very symbolic. They announced it over the speakers and everything, it was really cool. Over break, we had the Turkey Trap, which was hosted slash supported by National Honor Society volunteers and key club volunteers. What they did was they, you know, set up their boundaries, and they handed out medals, they supported with the handing out food and water and shirts. It was really fun, and there were over two thousand runners from like all ages, with like really old people stretching, and I knew little kids running around. What's really, what's really interesting is I was told that every year they do this, they get more pizza to supply to people, and every year they run out. So I thought that was really great, that either the community is growing or just this is becoming more well-known, and people are just running together. Because it got really serious, I mean, we had people stretching for like thirty minutes and forming like a big circle, which I thought was really, really cool, like people were training for it. Sometime over, or before break, the B-TAP, which is the Boltonsville Theater Arts Program, successfully performed Dear Athena. And then the next one, the high school is working on, is Hades Town, and rehearsals after we started today. So I hope that goes well. I actually really want to attend it, because it's actually cool. But the winter sports season also started, a lot of chatter about how tiring practices are and how strenuous it is. Everyone is trying to get to sexual this year. Last year it was kind of like a maybe, I don't really want to go that long, but this year, everyone, everyone wants to get there, which I think is great for people. Scheduling also starts soon, juniors start, and then it's going to be sophomores, seniors obviously, they don't really care anymore. But, so that'll be really exciting, and that's kind of in hopes of, in the future, what the activity fair will help with, because I'm sure a lot of juniors like myself didn't really know what courses there were. And lastly, the SEAL by literacy and SEAL civic readiness groups have officially like started their projects. They've had their beginning meetings, we've gone through like the introductions, but now we're diving into what we're going to focus on and hopefully get our seal.
Great. I really liked the energy and integrity you bring to your reports. Which program are you, you're in, what other programs? By literacy or?
Yeah, I'm in try literacy and SEAL civic readiness.
That's great, good for you, good for you. Thank you, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public request to speak. We certainly welcome feedback from the public. We do ask in the interest of time, if you limit your remarks to three minutes, but do we have any requests to speak tonight?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes we do. Hi, everybody, I'm Kirsten Kerenski, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm a seventh grade teacher at Ray Middle School, and I just wanted to tell you about a couple of books that are up for consideration tonight, and in addition to all the documents that you already have. And the question is, why these books and how do they fit into our bravery collection and our CRSE framework? In our CRSE framework, we believe in welcoming and firming environment. And that it's important for our students to see themselves and their families represented, and the right of other students to learn about diversities within the world in ways that don't deny anyone's humanity. And Gracefully Grayson is a book about bravery and being true to oneself. Grayson is a trans kid who wants to be in the lead production of Persephone, and there's this wonderful dialogue between him and his uncle, and he says that Mr. Finnegan called, apparently tried out for the lead role in the play. If you want to do this, well, you should be able to. We need to make the decision together about whether it's a good idea, so, I got the role? All of a sudden I can't help smiling, I didn't mean to, but I can't stop. I say it again, just to hear how the words sound one more time. I got the role? Grayson, are you okay, my uncle asks? Yeah, I tell him, still grinning, I'm perfect. The other book is Touching Spirit Bear by Ben Motterson. My colleagues in the English department and I are enthusiastic about this, because the boys, who, some of them who don't like to read, really gravitate toward this book. And, um, it's about Cole Matthews. Um, he journeys from a place of anger, and over the course of a year, on this isolated island in Alaska, he's brave enough to face his truth and finally learn humility, forgiveness, and the power of making amends. And so here's a passage I wanted to share with you. Cole stared up into the darkness, and the cold pond, his mind became almost translucent. The fish, the beaver, had come close. The day he touched the spirit bear, he had been near death and had been completely given up, trying to be in control. This discovery excited Cole and set him to thinking. If Hannibal's existed in the world of instincts and senses beyond conscious thought among, what happened to people in the frantic world of noise and hectic mushing? How much of the world did people miss, because they were not calm enough, empty enough to experience it? When he closed his eyes, the droppings fell warm on his face. At first it felt like his own tears of anger and fear. Then he breathed more deeply, feeling the rhythm of the world around him, and endless rhythm of time disappeared. The past, present, future became one, as the droppings on Cole's trees dripped to the ground, melting into the landscape to which they belong. As Cole stared back with the same patience all time, even the presence ceased to exist. He no longer thought of himself as Cole Matthews, juvenile delinquent from Minneapolis, Minnesota. Instead, he was part of the landscape, without a beginning or end.
Thank you, always nice to see people inspired and leadership, thank you. Okay, moving on to our business agenda, the first thing is the consent agenda. The South Board of Education approved a consent agenda pursuant to be attached. Sorry, Wayne? Okay, any questions or discussions on the consent agenda? One thing I did look at on the financials we have, cash wise, and I know that it says they're in money market, access cash in money market, I assume we're still getting a decent rate of return on that, I'm guessing?
Yes, we are, and we've been investing in my class, which is diversified by the council.
Great. Okay, although, I gotta admit, even with a good rate of return, that interest is pretty pittance in the size of budget, but it's good stewardship, so, good, thank you, thank you for that. And, uh, I see the trip request, we've always had a chance to review the trip request, and we certainly support these um, experiences by our, our kids, whether it's to sports, or arts, or whatever, so, anyway, but seeing no further questions, I guess we're ready to vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And, um, it's too bad she left, because the next item is the bomb textbook adoption question being presented by the assistant superintendent. These textbooks will be used, the student choice books that grade seven English classes, and they will appear on the agenda for January thirteenth, our regular education meeting, for second reading and approval, as in our long-term processes, we present it at one meeting and then approve it at the next meeting. Any thoughts or questions on all your books?
I just had a question about the, um, financials of it. I saw that it listed a like price per book, and I know we purchase them typically as a set, it's not for every student, but, um, the question is, how, I guess, how big of a purchase are we looking when we add to the collection? And then, is it already a budgeted line item, or is this come from like a contingency plan that's just applied to whatever building or conference or grade level that we needed?
So within the instructional budget, we yearly budget approximately three hundred thousand dollars for textbook purchases, and we do receive paid back from New York State for that. We have to spend a certain dollar amount, we always budget more than what we'll allocate, what we'll get in return, just because in case, you know, a purchase doesn't qualify. Um, that being stated, specifically, we're looking at for the one tax, the purchase of AD tax at a cost of eighteen dollars, you know, so when you, when you do the math, I mean, you're talking, you know, not a whole heck of a lot um, for this in the grand scheme of three hundred thousand dollars that we, that we allocate. And in fact, we're finding that, other than larger series, like last year we adopted a muted matte series, you know, it's tough to try to spend when we're not making a significant purchase, um, to use that three hundred thousand for just the routine novels and other changes.
And then just the other one was, I know that it's part of a series that they have for their, I guess, goal, it's not necessarily curriculum purchase, it's more just to enhance or broaden the availability of specific pieces for these students to choose from.
Correct, so this is, as the speaker spoke, about this is for their bravery unit, and so this is a choice text that, there's a variety of texts that students can choose from, and this happens, these will happen to be two additional texts that will be added to that collection for student selection.
Good, thank you. If no further questions, that will, we'll move on to item B. And item B is resolved, Board of Education approved a new course proposals for Dirty Junior High, ELA, and social studies departments pursuant to be attached. Sam, Andrew? And we talked a little bit about this last time, I think, broadcast journalism and contemporary world issues, there should be no problem finding curriculum for contemporary world issues, I think. So, uh, any questions or thoughts on, on those two items?
Just more of a comment, so, these courses are being proposed to give students options for ninth grade level and or eighth grade level curriculum, similar to what we've done in ELA in eighth grade. We created a few courses last year, just gives a little bit of a variety, so that students can, can work toward interests, still same content level, um, standards, New York State learning standards for the grade level, but a little bit of, um, flexibility in the, in the actual genre, I should say, that they're utilizing to get those standards addressed. So, uh, this, I think, fits in well with, you know, where we know the state's moving, with the Blue Ribbon Commission, and, you know, creating some options for students.
And I think both of these courses fit very well into project-based learning. So, I think, um, when teachers start thinking about new courses, they're thinking about how do I develop courses that can play into project-based learning type experiences?
And if the seventh grade was at Dirty, they might have the option of using these courses also, right?
Attention.
Yes. Any other thoughts, ready to vote? Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And then, turn that page. Um, item C, the South Board of Education approved the course revision name change for AP American History, with AP United States History pursuant to be attached. Don? Do we have Tom? Okay. And I, maybe you can have just a little overview on the reason for this?
So, this is the name that's listed on the AP website, so we're just, we're just catching up and making sure that it's co, you know, coherent with what's already listed.
Yeah.
So sometimes I think it's confusing to people, because they're looking for the US history when it's, or, and it's not there, so.
Thank you, okay. Any questions? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the South Board of Education approved the opening of May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four annual vote ballot boxes and destruction of ballots therein, as per New York State Education Law, Section twenty-three. Don? Jeremy? And just to clarify, so, uh, obviously there's been no questions as to that election, we're past the retention period, so we'll destroy these and wait for the next election, which is coming up soon. Correct? Any thoughts?
And we need the ballot box. For the sub-.
Need the rooms, okay, need the room, got it. Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. The South Board of Education approved the appointment of BSS specialists, election inspectors, chief election inspectors, and assistant poll clerks for the Baldenville Center School District Capital Improvement Project vote to be held December tenth, twenty twenty-four. Luke? Don? And, uh, we do commend these people, I think this is volunteer, right?
Some is volunteer, and some is.
Some is a good thing, okay. Yeah, but a lot of former teachers, employees here, which is always nice if they maintain a, some kind of reverence to the organization, want to come back and help, so. Any thoughts, any discussion? Okay, ready to vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the South Board of Education accepted F David, a collector, an unpaid property attachment court, as presented. Sam, Andrew? And, uh, we have, we have these on the agenda, so you can look at them. Do you want to put the summary up there? All right. And, and help me understand, so, all we're doing is verifying what the towns have told us, this will now go to the county for collection, but we are made full on this. No, this is not held out of our budget, correct?
The county makes us all.
Yeah, they take over responsibility for collecting this stuff, which they do eventually, because they put deeds on the properties, right? Okay, so, I think it's actually pretty good, so after over sixty-two million, one point eight got, did not get collected, so, um, fairly, fairly small percent, I guess.
And I do believe that, um, I do believe that it's consistent to what we see in other areas. So there's not anything unusual.
Yeah, we did, um, so you always do a five-year look back, and it fell right in the middle of the unformed.
Okay, good. Okay, questions, thoughts? See, vote then, those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And that brings us to the roundtable, and I think Joe has stuff for the roundtable.
So, Renee's gonna stop sharing, just so we can reshare, uh, so the audio for those that are watching online. And then I share again?
Yeah, watch it, so then I click right, this shares out, and optimize video, yeah. Okay, so now that this is being shared, she's gonna select that, just a second, that board number video, and, uh, before, again, another plug, December tenth, six to nine, District Operations Building. Please come out, please help support our capital improvement project, and enhance our hive. Um, as part of our video series, I wanted, um, we're gonna unveil tonight, and we'll, and we'll blast this out tomorrow or later this evening, uh, but this is our next video in our series, which highlights our Board of Education and why they are excited about this work, so Renee will start the video, and enjoy.
Historically, I think it's school boards who go from project to project, but when you're talking about changes in buildings, and we have any buildings, and you're making them more and more common, more and more modern, but this is a real plan that really sets this school on a horse for the future. So, I'm just excited to see this happen, of a real solid, long-term vision.
Well, this is the second thing I see for our community, is that all of our buildings will have renovations ongoing over the next ten, fourteen years, even though it's a large capital improvement project. And I think it would be great for the community to see the vision of former education, as well as the administration and the vision, recognizing our community to have, and involving them. Each building will have renovations to classrooms, some will have to be additions. Presently, we have a hundred and five really large, huge capital buildings going on, as of this week, and to be able to add to that maybe tomorrow, I think our community needs to just begin.
The thing, the thing I most excited, actually, there's several, uh, in regards to the Capital Project. First, it's, uh, it's an opportunity for all of us to plan for the future now, I think that's really important. Uh, the idea of making sure that we're thinking about what's gonna be happening in the future. Uh, the other thing that I like about the idea of this project is that it's research-based, and, uh, there's a concern enough to make sure that we get, we got feedback from all of the stakeholders, representative of all of the stakeholders involved in your project. Another thing that I think is super smart about this project is that it focuses in on collaboration, um, and consolidation of resources, which I think is huge, the idea of taking resources that have involved, which are many, and consolidating them to have the best outcome for our students. And then lastly, I think this is the most important thing, is that decisions that we make for our school community have to be thinking in terms of what's best for the students. I think this is a capital project, it gives us an opportunity to be able to create exceptional learning spaces for all of our students.
I think there's a lot to be excited about with this capital project. Um, for students and the teachers, there is brand-new classroom space that will support all kinds of learners and all kinds of administrative teaching methods. Um, for students and parents who know that transitioning between school buildings is often in a really stressful time, there are fewer transitions. And for taxpayers who are interested with resources, this long-range training will allow us to use those resources efficiently.
Um, just a lot of exciting things, and I think the most exciting part is being able to have the seventh grade students on the main campus, and I think that's gonna help with collaboration between like the administration, the staff, between schools, and often more opportunities for all the students with extracurricular activities, arts, sports, and that kind of thing. I think it's great to have such a, a long-term plan to prepare for the changes that are gonna come toward our community.
Well, we just came back from Dirty, um, to deal with construction in the suburbs, and honestly, the thing that I'm probably most excited about, and not only, teaching this guy's most school, or probably the business most circummember of the world, and the numbers, it's really handy, so. The excitement that we're reviewing, about four to ten and a half million dollars.
The exact way that we're reviewing about $40 and a half million of money on a $242 million project. But what we're doing is about 10 cents per thousand of a success value of a person's home. $215,000, how much are you talking about? $25,000 in taxes. That doesn't start until 2008, 2019, so we're here. And then the students, we don't have to worry now, which we make a point of. So to me, you can get to make a tiny investment like that versus a fantastic result to make it, but that's not, that's not anything I'd do on a school board.
Most exciting part is definitely changes. I'm excited about 30, the Bayford, the state that are excited to name it the Bayford Jim after the legend Leo Johnson. And everything else is really exciting too. All of the state that are stuck to win in the school fields. Primarily, Chris is excited about the name of the year, actually.
I'm excited because I've been on the Money for the Future Committee and the Sillies Committee in the past few years. And I'm really happy that we're finally gonna get ready for this project. I think it's gonna bring, create opportunity for our students. And I can't wait to see the excitement and the enthusiasm for the kids.
I think the biggest thing I'm excited about is the expansion of our community, our schools, and the opportunities for our students as well. And this project is about a 10-year planning by multiple community members, planning groups, communities that's finally coming to fruition where we can put a product up for the community to live on. Planning for the future is probably my biggest excitement. Is community growing, expanding with residential buildings, businesses, obviously the addition of a migrant coming in. I think being able to come up with a product and plan for the future is huge and exciting.
Very impressive. Where'd they get those guys? All I want is how, who helped Don with all those numbers? Did anybody, did you? Okay, I want you, okay.
Thank you, Cardz.
Okay, well, very impressive. So any other, I don't think what else we can report at this time, although I will. She left, but we should talk about the people that helped with all those videos. The students and...
Our plan was to recognize the students at the January Board of Education meeting as part of our spotlight. They've done a tremendous job of really making what you see, our community is seeing over the course of the last couple of months with these video series. The way I look at it is they're able to take, you know, ad, as adequate clip, and make it exceptional. I don't know how they do it, but they managed to find the right clips that, you know, make people look good and really get the message out that we need out. And they're talented. What better way than having some real-world experience? A lot of these students are looking to go into the broadcasting field. And I mean, it's just, it's unbelievable what experiences they're getting and what help they're providing us. Because we're, we're obviously saving a lot on our marketing because we have students doing this work for us.
But it also means so much more, doesn't it?
Oh, 100%.
The idea is this is supposed to be a collaborative effort. I think they just did an exceptional job. I just said that on purpose.
Absolutely. And what's exciting is they have learned so much about this process, about this project, that this will go out later this evening. Sarah's gonna blast this out to everyone. And then either tomorrow or on Wednesday, we actually have another video that was student-generated. So it's about the student experience, students that have worked along this project and understand the ramifications, have a perspective of having gone through our system. So that'll be a feature. And then there'll be one final Q and A clarification that we'll do on Friday along with all of the other videos. One more blast out to our community. We'll highlight the pack B video as well. And hopefully, it'll, it'll help.
Just as a side, Leo Johnson, Leo Johnson's grandson was one of the kids that did part of those videos.
Oh, great.
And of course, Leslie Cartier was essential in doing. And then Sarah Buckshot, who, whose job is our PR, has done a great job of organizing and getting things out. So a lot of, a lot of praise to go around there, a lot of praise to go around.
I'd like to just add, you know, Joe has spent the last in September till now, till next week, and he'll be there from nine until, or from six until nine. The tremendous amount of effort he has put into this, I think is just unbelievable to stand back and watch him night after night, early mornings. Danielle, behind the scenes, who's really, you know, putting a lot of these presentations together and in concert with what Joe's needing. She's attended all of those presentations. Tiffany, with all the financials, I don't know what she does. I just appreciate the fact that we have somebody who does that. And I just think as a board and as a community, you know, I just want to recognize the sacrifice that these individuals are making for this and for the community and for those students in this district. It's tremendous.
Here. Well, it's great work, everyone, and we'll keep our fingers crossed. For goodness sakes, get out and vote. I know some people have already voted. Okay, nothing else there? Guess we'll move on. The South Board of Education entered into executive session for the purpose of collective negotiations pursuant to the Taylor Law discussing Bolinsville Educational Support Professional Association contract and the employment history of a particular person. Tom? Those in favor? Basically, opposed? Motion carries. We'll take a five-minute recess and then exit. Thank you.